Call to order and roll call, please.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Edder.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Souchacki.
Here.
Mrs. Shuker.
Here. Five present, zero absent. It is 7:00 P. M. I don't think I've said that before. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in actions of the board may participate during the public comments portion of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the board sign-in sheet. A copy of the board meeting agenda is available to review on our school district's website. Please silence your phone during the meeting. If we can rise now for the pledge of allegiance.
By pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda yes presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Dobbins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Souchacki. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Shuker.
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Next up, comments from the public. We have no one signing in, so we'll move on to treasures business. Item four, Mr. Muccio.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuker. Just a couple items tonight. First item, four A, approved minutes. A motion to approve the minutes of the May 26, 2021 regular meeting is found in attachment T. One. Item five A, motion to approve the attached list of purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T. Two. Item five B, motion to approve the schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Authority, SORSA, renewal agreement with CF Risk Insurance LLC effective June, July 1, 2021 to July 1, 2022 for liability insurance at a cost of $87,093 is found in attachment T. Three. Item five C, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W. 9's attached is found in attachment T. Four. And item five D, motion to accept the funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, ARP S.R. Three grant in the amount of $649,532.72. New account number 507-922A will be created entitled ARP S.R. Three. S.R. Three was established under the American Rescue Plan enacted on March 11, 2021. Ask for motions four A, five A through five D.
Can I have a motion to approve the treasures business consent agenda motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dobbins. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a few items. Five A, the purchase orders over 5,000. We were to open item T. Two. We have four for approval. And the four are, first one's Martin Public Seating Furniture for the MTSS, the new position coordinator and assistant superintendent. That's $7,809.02 from the general fund. Second purchase order is also from Martin Public Seating. That's furniture for grades two and four, the new positions that we hired with the S.R. Two grant. So we're looking to initially code those from the general and permanent improvement funds. The total's $21,785.27. However, we're going to modify our S.R. Two application to account for that on the grant. Number three is also Martin Public Seating. This is from our permanent improvement fund, $19,569.84. This is to install a glass wall right up here in the media center for a professional development lab we're looking to have. And item four is Wilson Language Training. That's reading foundation supplies. That's $19,907.70. That's also coded to the general fund, but we're looking to move it to S.R. Two. These reading supplies are going to be for the...
So for Samantha.
Samantha.
One and two classroom are needed by additional resources. It's part of our reading program.
Gotcha.
This is what that additional teacher will be paying for the grant funding.
Gotcha. Thanks, Matt. Item five B is just our renewal agreement with SORSA. Our premium went up approximately $6,000, so it was about $81,000 last year. It's at $87,000 this year. And from talking with our insurance company, they said that premiums were risen across the board. So no school was unable to not have that.
There was also something in here about if you don't have a claim, then you don't...
Disappearing deductible.
Yeah. So this, this that was, this is in here is what pertains to our district, right?
Correct.
So there's a couple here that we have like a zero. Yeah, we're going towards that, I guess.
Yeah. A lot of it's based on luck. So, you know, if we're lucky. I know when I first came here, we had a roof claim a couple years ago. So, and that was just due to a windstorm that came through. So depends how lucky we're going to be just to not have insurance claims. Item five C, we have three new vendors. Number one is Jonathan Sissler for instruments for the concert. Number two is Bulk Bookstore. That's for classroom textbooks. And the third one is Jamie Sign, Sein, excuse me, for the sign. And we're looking at the sign right now, right in front of us. And five D is approving the S.R. Three grant. That's later on in a couple of discussion items. I'm going to have to talk on it. But we have received S.R. One. S.R. Two, this is now the third relief funds due to COVID-19. Our amount is $649,532.72. I just wanted to point out, if everybody's able to click on the allocations attachment, the ARP S.R. Three allocations, I just wanted to show what other schools are getting. So if we look, the difference between the two columns, the first is two-thirds of the full amount. The second column is the final, the total amount.
Mm-hmm.
So if we look at Cleveland, which is on page three.
Mm-hmm.
And they're getting...
$195,000.
Yeah. Actually, they're on page four, excuse me, page four. They're getting $293,000,000.
Yeah.
So almost 300. And that's just for S.R. Three. So when you combine S.R. Two and one, they're approximately getting $500,000,000. That's a lot to spend within the short timeframe that we have for the grants, which is two, three years.
Two years, two and a half years.
So that's, that's a lot.
You know, Matt's going to talk about some of it can be used for mechanicals for HVAC, which a lot of schools are looking at right now, and we'll get into that discussion. But Cleveland has put up almost all new buildings. You know, they passed the boundary. Cleveland is in very few old buildings right now.
Yeah.
And we had a discussion with a vendor today who just talked to Maple Heights, and Matt knows that Maple has mostly new buildings, and they got a large sum too. So some of these districts are trying to find ways to spend the money, as ironic as that sounds.
What happens if you don't spend it?
That meet the needs of it, then return.
It just goes back to the state.
Yeah. You know, initially with our S.R. Two application, we earmarked approximately $30,000 of our amount for cleaning supplies. But then, you know, the signs came out and said, well, COVID's not really on surfaces as, you know, as we once thought. So we're kind of redirecting that money that we initially kind of earmarked there for other purposes. So we're looking to adjust for that. But look at Columbus, just a little bit below Cleveland. They're also getting close to $300,000,000. So they're in the same, you know, category. They're looking at 500 million. So between Cleveland and Columbus, they're getting a billion dollars to spend in the next three years, give or take. It's a lot of money that's out there. Our amount, if we look, is on the next page highlighted in orange.
Yeah.
And that's our $649,532 and change that we have, so.
And you're saying that we've already gotten two-thirds of that? We've already gotten the $433,000?
Not, not per se. We, it's been allocated to us. That's how we receive it. But we have to spend it and then get reimbursed back for it. We don't just get the money and then spend it. For grants, we spend first and then apply for that reimbursement.
Okay.
And then we get reimbursed from the state. So the state's essentially holding all that money right now. But between ours, we're looking at, you know, close to a million dollars for all of our S.R.s approximately. And our administration's, before I hit that point, there's a new circumstance for the S.R. Three funds. So if we look at the second or third, it's going to be, it's actually a little more from the bottom. I want to say the third bullet point from the bottom, said at least 20% of the total S.R. Three award must address learning loss. So we have to earmark $130,000, which is approximately 20% of our $650,000 for learning loss. So that's just one new stipulation.
And as we said, that, that would be the, the new, the new hired teachers and supplies that, for them. So that, that's a slam dunk. That's, which is what a lot of districts are doing at this point in time. Now, they, they might not be adding, of course not, but they're, they're, they're using it to supply some costs.
And our administration's preliminary plan for S.R. Three, the very bottom bullet point, is to possibly fund the two additional elementary school teachers, which is Samantha Gambita and Courtney Littlefield, which we hired through S.R. Two for one additional year, which would be the 2023-24 school year. Possibly fund the new MTSS transition specialist position, which is Dr. Brian Freed, and/or possibly fund HVAC permanent improvements. So all three of those are items that we're looking at preliminarily for use of those funds. Any other thoughts?
Well, what's your timeline for being able to kind of firm up where you, where you think the dollars will ultimately flow?
Well, it's, we met with, we met with Gardner today. They're going to have somebody out in a week or so. The problem is that every school district in the state of Ohio is doing the same thing.
Sure.
Largely looking at facilities. So we're going to try to get it ballpark because, and I, I think I mentioned this the other day, but my idea is if we can jumpstart some of the things that are on our permanent, that permanent improvement plan that we started, and I, if it's feasible, what I'd like to be able to do, in a perfect world, we have enough money to finish off the air conditioning in the elementary building and, and the controls. So they're going to take a look at that area first, then look at the middle school. And so if we can take some of that S.R. Money and do that, and then we can go to the public when we're looking for the permanent improvement levy for the additional things, we can say we already got this started. We used some federal money to do this because we're allowed to. We kind of jumpstarted this process. Let's get on board with it to, to be able to do the rest of it. So that'll depend on what those figures are.
Okay.
We had a good conversation with, again, Gardner today. And they're an OSC, so we know that, I don't have to bring in six different vendors. And I'm, I'm getting 30 emails a day from mechanical companies because this, they, they all, they've all, and I, I think I said this to Matt, before the federal government had issued the numbers, I got two emails from companies telling us how much money we're going to get. Before the federal government had told us how, and they were, they were really close in the end. They were within like thousands of dollars of, of what we were going to get, you know. Hey, you're going to get this much. Do you want to redo HVAC? This was way back when. And so, so they are, they are astutely aware. But he also said, it's one thing, if we can lock down the project and then know that it's going to take place at some other time, and then we get in line with other people. So, and I'll talk about that later in my stuff because it's currently with, with everything that's going on with schools right now. One of our projects that we had planned for the summer is, is, looks like it's stalling on us because of the supply shortage.
And the timeline for S.R. Three goes until September 30, 2024. So.
Because these are all federal funds?
Yes.
Any, any changes in either the way the money's spent or extensions of spending would have to be done at the federal level?
Correct.
At least ostensibly?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
So we'll create this new fund with this recommendation, S.R. Three. And that's all I have for items for approval.
Then vocal.
Mr. Naim.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Shuker.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Next up, treasures discussion.
Gotcha. Just wanted to spend a little bit of time discussing our grants because it's approximately $1 million that we're looking to spend in a short timeframe. So continuously talk about these. So, you know, we're familiar with S.R. One, Two, and Three, and what we're looking to spend on because it can get kind of confusing, you know, all the different ones that are coming down. So S.R. One is item seven A. So at our June 10, 2020 board meeting, we established the CARES Act S.R. Fund, Fund Number 507. And that was the first round of relief money for COVID-19. And we received $61,034.41. And we spent that, we earmarked it, all for cleaning and sanitizing supplies and equipment. And we had spent $46,034.41 on supplies. We had purchased approximately $9,990 worth of masks, face shields. And when we say masks, we're talking both adult and youth masks. We spent $17,759.99 on desk dividers, and we purchased approximately 1,100 desk dividers that we have. And we spent $18,284.42 on cleaning and sanitizing supplies. So a lot of disinfectant wipes, hand sanitizer, spray bottles. As far as capital outlay, equipment goes, we spent $15,000 purchasing cleaning and sanitizing equipment. So we looked, we actually purchased two fogger machines, two all surface cleaner machines, a backpack mister, and we purchased with the grant eight purifier, air purifiers that we had. So the money went quickly. If we look at our reimbursement request attachment, if we were to open that, these are what are called PCRs, project cash reimbursements that I process through the state of Ohio for us to get our money back. So we spend the money first, and I upload those spending amounts, and then I go through, work my magic in the CCIP, and we get our money back from the state of Ohio. So we can look to see that we received $42,000, $1.58 back in November of 2020. Then I put in another request for more money that we had spent, $5,141.78, than $9,313.99. Then the last one for $4,577.06. So we actually just received, I had put that in back in April 26, and we just got it the other day, the $4,577.06. So that means that we've spent all of our $61,000, and we've received all of our $61,000. So S.R. One is completely closed out for us. Item seven B, S.R., any questions on that one before I move on? Okay? Item seven B is S.R. Two. So at our March 10, 2021 board meeting, we accepted the S.R. Two grant. And S.R. Two, our amount is highlighted there. We had initially received $291,579.48, but that was later adjusted by $2,000. So we're receiving $289,213.62. If we click on the allocations, this is for S.R. Two, and we can see the, the different amounts that we have in here. Just kind of wanted to point out ours and a couple others. If we look at page six, on page six, we can see Akron Schools. They got $42 million, kind of in the middle of that page. On page seven, we can see that Columbus and Cleveland are there, and we can see they're both getting about $131 million. So again, that's on top of what they were getting with S.R. Three that we just looked at. Our amount is going to be on page 12, and it's highlighted. So we can see our $291,579 and change. But then that was later adjusted by the state. Close out of this. And the bottom bullet point that we, actually the second to last bullet point, the S.R. Two funds have to be spent between March 13, 2020, and September 30, 2023. So we have about two years to spend our S.R. Two. Now, our plan for S.R. Two is the last bullet point that we have here. So it's to address learning loss by hiring two elementary teachers, Samantha Gambita and Courtney Littlefield. And we're funding them for the 2021-22, and then also 2022-23 school years, along with the supplies and materials that they would need for their classrooms. So reading supplies, desks, items that they would have for the students for those new positions. And that's pretty much going to take up the entire $289,000 that we're receiving for that grant, for S.R. Two. Any questions on that one? Roll to the next one. Okay. S.R. Three, item seven C. So at our June 9, today, board meeting, we accepted the S.R. Three grant. And as we were talking about before, our plan is to possibly fund those two additional elementary school teachers, Samantha and Courtney, for the 2023-24 school year because this grant goes an additional year until 2024, September. Or, you know, HVAC that we're looking at too. So a couple items that we're looking to fund with the $650,000 that we're getting. So that's close to about a million dollars, give or take, that, you know, we're receiving from federal government for COVID-19 that we have.
So, Mr. Muccio, I just wanted to circle back to a conversation you and I had probably about two weeks ago on, on the funds. And at that time, you explained about how many moving parts, how these parts are sold. They're going to be more and more material, but they're also a lot of moving parts, a lot of regulations as to how and under what circumstances money can be spent. And during that conversation, it became pretty clear that there's a high degree of interaction between yourself and the administrative team and, and teaching staff and, and others to make certain that we're putting the money to the best use possible and that it's a collective team process. So that was, that was an enlightening conversation.
Yep, absolutely. We work, you know, great as a team, all of us, on the admin side to, you know, find the best way to spend these funds that are needed for our district. And we're in a good position. I'm not going to lie. It's, it's, there's a lot there as far as the grants go. There's a lot of money, a lot of moving parts. I couldn't imagine what Cleveland's going through right now, looking at, you know, $500 million and trying to spend that in a short timeframe. So it's, I've never, none of us have ever seen, you know, anything like this, all these grants coming down, one after the other, and just all these requirements. So it's, it's a unique, it's, you know, it is what it is. So we're in the COVID time. So we're getting through it.
I was curious. Matt said something to me today from the, the, one of the treasure publications that had uses for S.R. Three. In one of the last paragraphs, I was shocked to see that, that what they believe is allowable is for districts to add on building space because now you're social distancing your kids. Cause, and so you're, by, by adding the building, additional space, you can now space kids out a little bit more. That, that the Association of Treasures, their interpretation of the S.R. Was that that was allowable on some levels. So I'd be curious to see if some districts with, especially districts that are in that hundreds of millions, don't maybe look at some of that. You know, Cleveland's gone to the small school concept, which I think is very good for them. I think they've had a really large amount of success with what Eric Gordon's done with that. I'd, I'd be surprised if some other urban districts didn't maybe look at that approach a little bit more. So.
Also, the fear with grants that I always have is, you know, whatever you purchase with a grant, you're not going to have that grant money into the future. So how are you going to fund those initiatives or supplies or equipment, whatever you have? So that's always something I'm mindful about, you know.
Is there any concern, just thinking, all these districts are getting this money. Is there any concern about like the contractors and, you know what I mean? Like, because it is a short, short window?
Huge concern, which is why, which is why Jerry Hickson was here from Gardner. Jerry and I have met on 20 occasions since the time I became superintendent. He's been with Gardner for a long time. Gardner's an OSC school, so we know they've been vetted by OSC. This is not one where I'm going to, I, I'm willing to open the doors and all of a sudden, a whole bunch of people that are fly-by-nighters come, you know. Yeah, it's certainly ripe for some fraud to take place, quite honestly. And so the comfort for me is that knowing that they're a vetted vendor. And Jerry was very upfront today saying, hey, you know, here's what the wait time would be. Here's what, you know, I said, Jerry, I get it, but I, I need to get the ball rolling right now. And, and normally it would be Jerry and maybe two other people from Gardner might come out. And he said, we're so... And, and normally it would be Jerry and maybe two other people from Gardner might come out, and he said, we're so, we're all over the place right now. Instead, we're everybody, just because of what's going on, so.
So it seems like this is going to be something we're going to have to make some quick decisions.
Yeah.
And roll with it.
Right.
To fit those deadlines. Fun. Count us in.
There, there's a component of that that, that we have to account for community input to, and that'll be in the form of a survey.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll put together a Google survey and we'll shoot that out, and that will, a lot of districts should do it a lot of different ways, but we'll send that out to stakeholders with some, because there, there's a caveat to it that you have to have had stakeholder input into how the learning loss should be taken on.
I like the idea of the H VAC. I mean, we, we've heard it, like, at the community meeting that we had, I know that that's, was a concern for a lot of families and students. And so I love that we're able to kind of look at this, like, outside of the box a bit.
Yeah.
And kind of fill troupes with one still and really.
It'd be really nice to get a little jumpstart on that, just to be able to say that, and even with the window, with the additional window units we bought from the elementary going, I think almost every classroom now has some sort of air conditioning in it over there. Some of them are the, the portables, the temporaries. But certainly the, the kindergarten wing, that fourth grade and the, the big open areas are air conditioned. The, the third grade rooms are, on this east side of the building are, those are hot, those are, those are some tough ones, and then Barb Currie's science room, and then Kelly Orlando's room there. So as we talked and looked at in the, in the past, we think if we had an additional chiller, we can take care of that area. So that, that would be like one unit. We also know that up, when they put the addition on up here where Mr. Martin's room and some of the science rooms are, that they put a bigger chiller than what they needed, anticipating that they would expand air conditioning at some point. So we know that we can expand off of the chiller that's up on top of the building here, possibly into some of the middle school rooms. Because as I said, ad nauseam is that when we looked at solutions for the middle school rooms, we've got a lack of power there. So when we bought the portables, because that was the next week we bought the portable air conditioners for, I just told Jim Zerbola, I said, just start plugging them in until you start popping fuses, and then when, and then back off. So we bought as many, we put as many as we could in the rooms over there without what, what, what our load could handle. And then the, the toughest area is that, that north wing, and those are all high school kids down in that end. But, you know, the, the social studies rooms and the English classrooms that are on that north end of the building, that really heat up in the afternoon. They heat up no ma, no matter what time of year because they're right above the boiler room. I used to tease Doug about his windows being open in February when it's five below outside, but they're, they're directly above the boilers. And our, and our boilers, again, Tom Dalton does a lot of our boiler work, was in, he goes, Tom, your boilers are good for another twenty years. And, and not having to take out something that's not, fixing something that's not broken. And I, I made that very clear with Gardner, too. We're not looking to redo, we're talking strictly about HVAC right now, or, or, I mean, air conditioning right now, and controls. Because we know our controls are obsolete as well.
Two more after this. One thing I just want to add to our S R one, two, and three is, we don't know if there's going to be an S R four. So we didn't know when S R one came out that there was going to be an S R two, and then when S R two, we didn't know that there was an S R three, so there may be an S R four. Item seven D is the coronavirus relief funds. So at our August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty board meeting, we established the coronavirus relief funds, Fund Number five ten. And our amount from this was thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars and one cent. And our breakdown, we had spent all of that on laptops, so we purchased one hundred and eighty Chromebook, Chromebooks along with management licenses. And if we click on the reimbursement request, we can see that I put in the reimbursement with the state back in December twenty-ninth, and we have received those funds, so that grant's completely cleared out. So we had spent all of that on the Chromebooks, and we received all those funds.
Kudos to Dave Wallace on that, for getting out in front of that. Because I, I know one nearby district that probably about a month after we ordered ours, just got those Chromebooks in May. So by Dave being out in front of that, we got, we got our Chromebooks relatively quickly because that quickly got backlogged. And we talked to Dave throughout the course of the year and, you know, how lucky we were because we were looking for some additional stuff, and we just knew that the timeline. But I, I would tell you, Independence was behind us on that, and they didn't get all their Chromebooks until April and May. That, that's, their back order was maybe five months, five months off on, on, from when we got our delivery. So Dave got out in front of that, and we didn't waste any time with that, so kudos to Dave for getting after that.
If we look at the last bullet point at the top of the third one, the award period was from March first, two thousand twenty, through December thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So that's why there was that short timeframe to spend it before the end of December, two thousand twenty. Then the federal government extended the deadline for one year, up until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. So that's why, as Tom was, you know, describing, there was that short timeframe, everybody was kind of, you know, trying to get out in front and, you know, get everything spent. Because I think some schools were also fearful that they weren't going to be able to spend it in time. So, but, yep, great job. The last one, seven E, are the funds from Governor DeWine. So at our September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen board meeting, so this was before COVID had started. At our board meeting, we established the Student Wellness and Success Funds, which is Fund four sixty-seven. Governor DeWine in fiscal year two thousand twenty and twenty-one, through his budget appropriated new funding of two hundred and fifty million in fiscal year two thousand twenty, and then three hundred million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one to support student wellness and success in schools. We have received from Governor DeWine's amount, one hundred and forty-seven thousand, three dollars and seventy-two cents. And our plan for these funds, the last bullet point, is for the three-week extended learning plan in the summer of two thousand twenty-one. So we just approved that at the May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one board meeting, the M O U on compensation. So we're ready to go with that plan. It kind of changed our initial, you know, planning for those funds because we were thinking of what we could do with this back in two thousand nineteen, which was before COVID happened. And then COVID came, and we adjusted what we're looking to spend these funds on, so.
And we morphed it. Originally, we had talked about implementing a summer reading program from K to twelve. And elementary, middle, and high school, I had a kind of a key teacher, and we were working on what we could do to just get any kind of active reading by the kids and what, some kind of. And then when COVID hit, we were able to funnel it into the extended learning plan, so. Really covers pretty much the same timeframe with the kids, but it's a little bit different structure. And the summer, extended learning plan will be reading heavy as well, as Matt talked about, the reading and math component to it.
That's all I have. Unless there are any questions, sir? Good.
Okay, next up, superintendent's business.
All righty, A, motion motion to adopt the Cogahite Student Handbook for Cogahite's High School and Middle School, two thousand twenty-one, as recommended. B, motion to approve Cogahite Student Handbook, Cogahite's Pre-K and Elementary School, two thousand twenty-one, as recommended. Business agreements, contracts of membership. A, motion to approve agreement with the Ohio Department of Education, Office of Child Nutrition for Participation in Ohio, USDA Child Nutrition Programs for twenty-one, twenty-two school year at no cost to the board. B, motion to approve the renewal of Cogahite Schools' annual membership with the Cogahite, Cogahoga, it should be Valley Chamber of Commerce, for twenty-one, twenty-two, at a cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. C, motion to approve the updated administrative supervisory and exempt classified employee schedule benefits as recommended effective twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. D, motion to approve an annual license agreement for the attached with Neola Incorporated regarding policy development, update services, not to exceed five thousand dollars in total for the year. E, motion to approve agreement with Cleveland Clinic Learner School for Autism for providing educational services for a student who resides in the Cogahite School District, effective August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one to July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, at a cost of eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. F, motion to approve an agreement with O L A Therapy to provide specialized therapy services for Cogahite students from July first, two thousand twenty-one, to July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, at a cost up to sixty-eight thousand for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Business staff recognitions. A, motion to accept the resignation of William Forsyth as a Cogahite School Bus Van Driver, effective the end of the year, twenty twenty-one. B, motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Doug Amari after thirty-five years of service with Cogahite Schools. Superintendent Business Employment, supplemental positions. A, motion to approve the employment of Summer Maintenance Aid Student per the attached list for Summer twenty twenty-one, paid at the twenty twenty-one miscellaneous pay rate schedule. And B, motion to approve the employment of Kathy Topovich as the Extended School Year Transportation Coordinator for Summer two thousand twenty-one, per her adopted hourly rate, not to exceed twenty hours per week unless approved by her supervisor. I ask for those items to be approved.
Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's business consent agenda options? Moved by Mr. Sichaki.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Namon. Discussion.
The, the handbooks, we may do it a little bit differently. Mrs. Etter brought a, a good point to my attention, and one of them had the staff list, the other one didn't. We may go to an all-online handbook, because we had been buying the agendas for a number of years, and, and the secretaries are telling me the kids really don't use the agenda. So we might go to an online handbook and assign off for that, and then purchase separate agendas for any kid that wants an agenda. They charge us by the page for the handbook to go into the agenda. So the more handbook that we put in, the more expensive the agenda gets it, gets for us. And then with the number of students that really don't even use them anymore, it, it, we're just looking to save some pennies on that and then still provide agendas for kids that really want to use them, so. With the transition of most things online, so that's, that's where we're heading in that direction. The USDA Nutrition, that's just the nutrition guidelines for two thousand twenty-one, that's free of charge. Membership with the Chamber of Commerce, we really didn't do anything with the Chamber of Commerce just last year, and I, and the chamber actually, last spring, wanted to try and do something on Zoom, some kind of state of the schools. And the timing was terrible, and Ben and I, Independence were saying, we really don't want to do this, and I want, I need to thank Bob Mangor because Bob Mangor stepped up and went to the chamber and said, listen, this is a terrible time for schools, even to try and put a state of the schools together, you, you, we just got to push it off. So I owe Bob a big thanks and that, because Ben and I would have muddled through and tried and done it, and I don't know where, where Dave was down at the Courser Center. I can imagine he was in the same boat with us, but, you know, we'll pick back up with, and, and the big thing, and from what I understand, their biggest event of the year is the state of the schools. That, that, that's their biggest attendance for us, so we'll, we'll get back in that, in that for next year, and certainly a lot of things for us to brag about, and I think overall, that's a, a pretty good connection for us.
I'm surprised they didn't give some kind of, like, discount for the membership since it wasn't really, no one really could do anything.
Yeah.
There were no events or anything.
I might, I might shoot April an email and, and suggest that to her, so.
I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't be part of it, obviously we should.
Right.
But I just, you know, I'm sure other people are thinking the same thing.
And, and, well, I think, I really think that they probably lost some membership last year because of COVID, and people just said, I'm just not, and I have no idea what the business membership costs to that. We get a, the schools all pay a reduced rate, so. The Classified and Exempt Benefits Package, and I'm just going to click that open for a second. A couple changes, if you look on the bottom of the first page, this was originally constructed by Ed Holland back in August of two thousand and twelve. We, we revisited it in two thousand and eighteen, I think Matt and I did that in July that year, and then two thousand and nineteen, and then two years later, we're looking to make a couple revisions to it as well. This is for all the employees that are not members of Chaser Chat that are exempt benefits. And the recommendations that I'm making for that is that, is that in the group that we add an additional five days onto the vacation, that can be paid out for those employees that aren't, are unable to use it. I, I'm a firm believer in getting away and recharging and getting your time in some, and this was one of those instances. We rolled over some vacation time with employees last year. You, you allowed me to roll five days over for a lot of our employees. And even with us just coming out of COVID, a lot of people weren't able to use them and, and, and do some things. So, you know, this is just a little, little thing on that end of it to, to go to the ten days. And then the other part was, we've, we've reimbursed at two hundred and twenty-five per semester credit hour, and we're going to up that to twelve hours per year. So I, I really want to encourage those people to, they don't, the other groups have incentives for additional education. If Chase, they can accumulate clock hours, and they can add that to their, add that to their salary. Teachers, as we know, can move across the salary schedule. We really don't have anything for our exempt people, but yet they still want to better themselves. And I got Dave sitting in the back room is a perfect example, that Dave's looking at maybe adding another degree on, and I certainly want to encourage that because we benefit from that. And before, there was, there was limitations on the hours, and I think if we go twelve per year, we encourage those people to, to provide an avenue for them, for them to continue their education, which we benefit in the end. So those are the changes that I was recommending to that document, so. License agreement with Neola, that's just for our continued update of policies. And I want to thank Matt Young because we're, the first time in six years of being a superintendent, we're, I think we're caught up. But we were way, way behind for a while. I mean, there was, as, as this board will also know, there was stuff that got put into a parking lot that I, I think went into a dumpster, not a parking lot. So we, we, it kept emerging, so, but the agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Learner School, that's eighty-three for thousand for, eighty-three thousand for a student. If you remember, before we implemented our own resource rooms, we had two at Learner, and I think Learner at that time was about seventy-eight thousand. And I think three at Monarch, which was also in the high seventy thousands. We're down to, I think, this one student at Learner, we didn't make anybody come back. We said to parents, especially these kids, if your students are placed, they can stay in those locations as long as, until they age out, if that's what you, if they want to come back to our resource rooms, they can. And quite honestly, this student would be difficult to service in our resource room with, with our other students, but, you know, but I, this, I think the re, the point I'm trying to make is the resource rooms have, have been very good for us. They've kept kids home and in the district, and, and I, between Laura Butler and, and Elena Pepperizos, we got a couple rock stars that are just doing a great job with kids. And, and just super excited about what we're going to be able to do next year with, with the new family consumer science teacher, the new art teacher, just, and how excited they are about doing some collaborative things. As a matter of fact, they were in, they were in already, and one of the first questions is, Kate, can we meet this summer to start talking about some of these reviews? So it's, it's fun to see that excitement come from your staff. L L L Therapy for specialized therapy, not to exceed sixty-eight thousand for the year. The resignations, Bill Forsyth's retiring, and sadly Doug Amari, my good friend, who's younger than me, is retiring. I don't know how that happened, but, and I thank the board members that were able to come last Thursday. You know, I, I don't do something very formal, and I don't make any notes, and I kind of shoot from the hip, and I think the staff kind of likes that because I turn into Sichy Evans for about, about twenty minutes when I introduce him and say some things about him, and I try and keep it lighthearted because I get as emotional as they do about some of those people leaving, so. But that was, the seven people that were up there, that was an all-star crew. And you say, like, wow, what a, what a void that could create, and we've been so fortunate in the people that we've been able to bring in, and the people that want to come to work at Cogahite. When you, when I think about teachers from Aurora, from Brexville, from, from those, those kind of districts that want to leave those districts to come to work for us, I think that says a lot for our district. Student employment, we added one more student to that list, and she had previously contacted me, and we, she just didn't get on the original list. Great group of summer kids, was talking to Mrs. Shuker about it beforehand. It's, it's a fun group. They were in the office today. I'm going to have a blast. I think that half of the softball team's working for us this summer, but, and, and really, and they're workers, and they, and they're fun kids to be around, so that's good stuff as well. And Kathy Topovich for the E S Y Transportation Coordinator for our summer, for any, any transportation we need to have with our extended, kids that are in extended school year programs for the summer. So I ask for approval of those items.
Excellent. Roll call.
Mr. Sichaki.
Aye.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mrs. Shuker.
Aye, motion passes five, zero. Mr. Evans, comments?
A couple things, you know, the softball team, state runners-up, and, and just what a run. Just so much fun. Great kids, but I'd like to invite them to the twenty-sixth meeting and have the board recognize them, if the board's on board with that. Sometimes it's tough getting them here in the summer. I already talked to two of them, and they're already into their summer leagues and they're this, that, and another place. So hopefully we can catch them on a Wednesday night when they don't have games, but really would like to recognize them, and, and Coach, the coaches, Coach Manfredonia, Ken, Coach Salzmer, you know, they, they, great job with those, with those kids. And it kind of came out of nowhere, you know, we, we lost last year, we think we would have been pretty good last year, but two years ago, they were below five hundred. And, and, and I told those seniors that this is, this is a great example of what senior leadership does, because this was a senior life. Because this was a senior led team. Those, those four seniors really took control of this team and it was fun to, just, but boys too, the baseball team, we, the spring, I got to pinch myself, spring was so, so much fun around here. We had kids back in the building. We had track, we were able to run our track meets. The baseball team made it run to the district finals, got on the radio. The guy said, Tim Alcorn said all kinds of wonderful things about Cogah Heights and our kids in the, throughout the game and the, and the softball stuff. So just a really fun run. June 30th, special meeting scheduled for the mascot discussion. We'll post that. June 26th meeting, we should have the CHAT and Chase, we both, we have tenant agreements with both groups right now. We finished up Chase yesterday. CHAT has already approved the, the contract on their end. I think I sent you, in last week's Friday update, I sent you the, did I, okay. I'm putting together the Chase stuff now. We're working back and forth to get the, the tenant agreement in place and then that'll be, so we'll do both of those agreements on the 26th. Both very positive.
Is it the 23rd?
Oh, 23rd, thank you Joe. 23rd.
20.
I'm just making, I'm just pulling faces. You all don't want to come out of Saturday?
I was like, I was like, Saturday.
The 23rd, my apologies. So any, where I said the 26th, this is the 23rd. The roof project, they just got in contact with us because again, that, that's a, that has to be done when kids aren't in school because that's the area above the cafeteria. The last thing I need is a roofer laying in the middle of the lunch table. That project looks like it's going to get delayed because they can't get supplies. There's just a huge supply shortage right now everywhere. So gyms are balls and we're working on them. The one thing, my concern is that no matter what happens, that we lock in on the price that we got for this, for the project at that given time. Because I, as you talked about vendors, I, I think we're going to see some gouging with supplies. You've already seen it with lumber. Don't, don't try and buy a two by four. You know, we went to buy some wood at the, my wife wanted a couple of two by fours and she told me, I'm not looking to build a whole house, I just need a couple of two by fours. And then, because the price is like five times what it normally would be. It's just, it's just crazy. New hires, all but one in place. We're still working on band and which is tough shoes to fill, you know, Mr. Sokol. So kudos to, to all those people, Mr. Janatovic, Mrs. Housin and Mr. Young and everybody that's sitting in on all those interviews and great process. And, and even with that number of retirements, they did not shortcut the process at all. There's been kind of a three-step process. They've had, they've had, in the band ones, they had the band boosters in, they've had Mr. Michaels, Mr. Sokol came back to help interview. This last one, we had students in to ask questions. I, I think the final stage Mike Janatovic's going to do is going to have, maybe if, get four or five girls from the Scarlet Angels and, and see if the, invite the people in to see if they can conduct the Scarlet Angels in a short piece to see how they work with the kids on a, on a short-term basis. So I'm really impressed with the process they put in place. I'm going to schedule a meeting to, to discuss the pool with the board. We just got the fourth study in the sonogram study of the floor. But I've also invited Matt Laughlin, the swim coach, and Becky Voitek. I told them that they'll be invited. Matt runs Fairview Rec Center, the pool, so he's got a real knowledge of the workings of the pool. Unfortunately, there's a lot of rumors that are just running rampant out there because I'm starting to get emails from swim parents that we're going to fill the pool in, that it's going to be a field house. And I said, we, we haven't even looked at all four studies yet, so please be patient. The one concern right now is that, you know, we were losing a couple hundred gallons a night at the end of the swim season. So we were just filming it so we could get through the season. And the last two studies were trying to find the leak, so we need to identify where the leak was and to make sure that the area underneath the pool isn't getting washed out because looking at the way the water was running, that we could have a real serious problem if there's some kind of leak and all of a sudden the area underneath the pool is, is washing out on us. So there's a, all that being said, whether or not we can have the pool filled by October, we don't know. So we're searching for alternative sites where our kids might be able to practice to start the season. And actually I'm, Ryan's working on it, I'm calling a couple of markers in because we've let some people come here in the past when they've had pool issues and it's time to return the favor to us, so. So if you, anybody approaches you about the pool, we haven't made a decision pool. People already said, oh, I heard it's going to be a field house and there's going, no, 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 no. And there's been, it's like, so I'm trying to quell that. I talked to Becky Voitek today and I said, I asked her to schedule a meeting with the pool parents so I can meet with them and I'll, I'll go and stand before them and talk about where we're at and the, the four studies and three we know right now and one we don't. Quite honestly, I, I got looked at the sonogram study and I couldn't, I need a, I can't read it. I need them, and I think they write it that way on purpose so they have to come in and interpret for you what it's actually saying, so. And then the HVAAC with the S3 funds, we, we discussed already with, with Gardner. So hats off to Mr. Burek, you know, we're hosting UCP, United Supermarket Policy, some of the special needs kids this summer. And I, and had I not seen George out as the kids were unload in the morning, as the parents were dropping off, I wouldn't, I mean, I can't tell you what room they were in in the building because I haven't seen them yet. But, but they're, they're here and it's without a glitch and, and it's, it's a good thing for us and it, it's a good service for our kids. And then we also service some, some kids from surrounding districts too through UCP, so it's a good use of our people. So that, that's up and running. We're going to meet tomorrow as an admin team to make sure we've dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's to get ready for the extended learning to kick off next week.
It starts next Monday?
Yeah. And in between, all of our administrators are trying to sneak out and get a little bit of vacation time, so we're, we're trying to figure that, we're trying to jostle schedules, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item number 14, Board Business Resolutions. A motion to approve the superintendent's request for membership with the Greater Cleveland School Superintendent's Association for the 21-22 school year at a cost of $125. Item B, motion to approve the superintendent's request for subscription, LRP Publications School Law Briefings Newsletter for the 21-22 school year at a cost of $259.50. And item C, motion to approve the superintendent's request for membership with Buckeye Association of School Administrators through BASSA for the Ohio Association of Local School Superintendents at a cost of $20 for the 21-22 school year. I will make the motion to approve the Board, Board's Business Consent Agenda motions. Can I have a second?
No, second.
Seconded by Mr. Naaman. Any discussion?
Just to, I'll ask John with my new contract, just to write OALSs into that, it's a $20. BASS is in that contract, but the OALS is not. That's the local super, and it's a $20 addition, so we don't have to get my BASS membership through, which is almost $2,000, but I got to come back to you for a $20. So.
I thought it was a misprint, actually.
No, well, well, and I, quite honestly, I didn't join the last two years because it was in, it was in an awkward time and they only meet once a year. But this year, Deb Delisle, who was a former Ohio Superintendent of Instruction and worked for the federal government, and Jim Tressler are the two featured speakers. And quite honestly, I want to hear both of them. So the other, two years ago, I, I didn't go two years ago and last year with COVID, there was no, nothing there. So it's, I, I kind of picked and choose, but at $20, it's, you know, I just want to make sure I don't get roped into being one of their officers, so.
Just say no.
Yeah. And GCSSA, that's, there's probably, that's a greater Cleveland. I think there's, it's really more than greater Cleveland. That's probably a lot of Northeast, so I think there's maybe 80-some superintendents in that group. And that's professional development for me. They do a professional update specifically for superintendents and that's been a real good resource. And then the LRP is just, just a, I get school law briefings, like, that's like hot off the presses and that, that comes to me on a monthly basis. And that's not just Ohio, that's kind of some national trends too with what's going on with school law.
Sounds like important things, especially as education is a little chaotic through this time. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mr. Sucek.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Item number 16, Board Policy and Bylaw Reviews. That's going to Mr. Evans. No, Mr. Mucho.
Mucho.
He's the only one not looking at me.
Credit cards.
Credit cards.
Credit card policy. So this is one from the parking lot or the dumpster maybe? And we were looking to roll into.
Actually, we have one in place, but it's, and I don't know, I don't know that this one is that much different, but it needed to be updated, so.
If we, yeah, if we click on it, so this is just an update that we do have a credit card policy in place, but just from talking with our contact over at Neola, you know, we want to get this one updated, not our books, so that's what we're doing. Everything that we described and wrote in here is what we're currently doing. So we're just putting on paper basically what we're doing. So there's really no difference in anything that we're going to handle as far as our credit cards go. We're in a good spot. We printed off the credit card policy for three other school districts, Parma, Lakewood, and Brexville. And we were just kind of, you know, reading through it. And the amount of credit cards that Parma has and the other school districts was quite a bit. Us here, we only have two credit cards, the treasurer and the maintenance supervisor. And we approved those credit card limits at the board's organizational meeting in January. And then we also have a Home Depot card that the maintenance supervisor, along with the woods class teacher uses. So we're in a good spot because we don't have, you know, a number of credit cards that different administrators and teachers hold, which, you know, if that's the case, that gets, you know, very cumbersome and there's a lot of accounting with all those credit cards. So we're in a good spot with ours. Really for the treasurer's office, I mean, we only use the credit card for registration purposes for conferences, Capitol Conference, we use the credit card for that purpose. You know, if there's an emergency, it's there for that reason. Hotel reservations for, you know, the sports teams, we just used that with John Schaefer the other, the other day. But aside from that, as you are able to read through this for the first, you know, reading, take your time. If there are any questions, just reach out to me and we can, you know, discuss more. This won't be up for second reading till the next board meeting, so.
And even with the advent of us using Amazon more because things are available through Amazon, we, we don't, there's no need to extend or to push up what our limits are because the, the turnover is relatively quick. And, and we are using Amazon a whole lot more than just because some of the things that we normally would have, and Amazon doesn't take purchase orders. So any, there's a lot of things that I know on days in and on the tech end that are, that are here in two or three days through Amazon. Even some of the curricular stuff for, for Mr. Young and some of the supplemental stuff that we can get through Amazon on a very quick turnover, still, but we don't, we're not expanding our, we're expanding our use, but we're not expanding our limits at all because the turnover is so quick. And you, you guys set the limits at the, at the organizational meeting every year and we, we did all that way back in 2011 after the scandal and everything else. And I'm kind of the anti-credit card superintendent. I, I, I mean, I've been in districts where every administrator carried a school credit card and when teachers took groups to competitions, they handed them credit cards and it was just a, very scary for me. You know, and I, I, just one more thing to worry about, I, I love the way that we do it here and it, and it, it works. And the fact our treasurer's office is in the building and if there are glitches with it, it's just a matter of somebody walking upstairs and getting it figured out because they're so easy to work with, so.
That's, that's really good actually, because if you're, if you're limiting the control of the cards, that's the first major control. So there's not a lot of people that have them. Where one, I saw that actually reading the policy that, you know, you restrict the cash withdrawals, which is, could be another black hole too, which is really good. Did I have a, did I have a question though, like for the, the maintenance supervisors, for example, do they fill out an expense report and justify all their transactions before you pay them? Or they actually, do they, you know, so they, so like you get a monthly statement, so they, do they justify every single one of those transactions before you put a payment?
We need, yeah, we need supporting documentation for these transactions. So we don't just, so, you know, imagine the school district credit card as your own credit card. When the bill comes, we don't just, you know, blindly pay. We need that supporting documentation for everything. And we, and you know, there's certain prohibited items that, you know, alcohol is prohibited in school districts.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, we, we make sure none of the items are prohibited items.
And really his is for emergency use.
Right.
And when, because I, I just signed off on 37 repositions for July 1 for, because he, the mechanic will keep open POs with different vendors for parts and supplies as we need them and that's all done, that, those companies all work with us with the open purchase order. So in, in the, the few times that I, the maintenance supervisors had to use it, I get a call and then I in turn will call the board president to say, listen, this generator broke last night, it blew up, he's got to get these parts tonight so we have power tomorrow. I get a verbal approval from the, from the board president and then I let him know to go ahead with it. It's never, it's never a blindly, you know, I had to go, they, he knows what that chain is, as did, as did Neil. You know, it would call me and then I would call the board president to say, listen, something happened with one of the buses that's not covered with our open purchase orders, this is an emergency, we need to, he needs to use the card for it, so.
That's great. So that's, that's the only time that we use it, then that's really good. Because actually, you know, I was going to ask the next question, it was going to be like, what's the cutoff between having a PO and actually putting it on a credit card? It sounds like it's only used like, hey, but, you know, like you said, something broke and we need to fix it now, as opposed to putting it through accounts payable then. So that's, I think that's, that's a good control then.
Yeah, accounts payable is our primary way to go. Secondary is the credit card. So like, you know, Tom's saying, Amazon can't really use purchase orders if we have emergencies. So those are kind of, you know, the circumstances that we would use the credit card for.
Totally makes sense, yeah.
All the businesses that, because they, they deal with all the schools, so the, the parts supply places. And I think, I think it's easier on their end, quite honestly, to deal with purchase orders. And all districts do it the same as us. They, they, some of them do it on a quarter or semester, on a yearly basis, but they'll have an order, open purchase order not to exceed. And then when Jim or, or Joe Bladus needs something, like if he needs sparks plugs, he calls the parts place that he gets the spark plug from and says, listen, I need 12 spark, we get the bill, the bill comes up, it gets double verified and then it gets paid. And then that's noted on that, on the, on the open purchase order, so. So not exceed any kind of limits or anything on that. And so that, it's been very efficient with us, the double sign off, work for, it works for us. Kathy Martin, everything's done electronically. Kathy enters the, enters the receive, the, the packing list or what was received in the bill. And then it comes to me for approval and I, quite honestly, I read every one of them. I open every one of them to make sure that I see what I'm approving before it goes back up for payment, so.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, moving on. Item 17, Board Discussions, Community Reports and Comments. Mr. Dobbins, do you want to start off?
Sure. So I had a chance to, actually, Mr. Evans invited all the board members to the Staff Employee Awards and Recognition Program. That was very interesting. And as I understand it, I think that we had 200 years of cumulative service, we're retiring that, in that event or during that event?
Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot of time.
When you put it, yeah.
That's a lot of time.
That's a lot of teaching time.
Yeah, so it was, it was a fun time and thanks for inviting me. The other thing I wanted to let the, the group know is that I did speak to Senator Dolan's office last week and I, and I had a chance to actually speak with one of his aides. And I, and I asked again that the senator during his deliberations on putting together their portion of the budget, that they include this Ohio Fair Funding Plan, add it back in, which is already in the House version. And I guess that was for naught because as I understand it, the budget was approved today or voted on today and it doesn't include that.
Well, parts of it, and, and we were on with Russell today and there, there's some question about the formula that Senator Huffman and Senator Dolan use to come up with the funds.
In the Senate version?
In the Senate version.
Okay.
So, I'll be online tomorrow, just here exactly. But I got an email saying that there looks to be, in Mr. Muchio's terms, some funny math in some of the calculations. So, I, I'm not sure where that, where that's all headed. But, and I, and just my, and this is my, this is 100% commentary, opinions of Tom Evans, not necessarily reflective of anybody else. But what typically happens, and I've seen it now through three cycles, is that, especially with the school funding thing, they, a lot of times the legislature does the divide and conquer. So, while they don't want to grasp onto the fair funding plan, they've taken the attitude, well, if we throw a little bit of money at them, that'll shut them up for three more years. And I think that's really the attitude that the Senate kind of came up with with this proposal. That, ah, we're gonna, like Cleveland Heights, they addressed all the loss, the money that's going out in charters for them. It says, "So, we're just gonna kind of give them enough to appease them right now so they won't push too hard on this other one and they won't make a big stink about it." And I, and I, now, this is the second, my second time through a, a funding cycle. And that really is the approach that they take. And I, of course, they'd never say that to you, but that's really, in the end, that's the way it works out. Because schools get very territorial then about their funds. And you, and they'll separate the urban schools from the suburban schools, from the rural schools. And they know who they need to take care of to get the votes that they need to take care of in their districts. So, it, it becomes a very political process as it narrows itself down. And then they got, it's all gotta be done by the end of the, this month. And historically, they've kind of waited till the 11th hour to say, here's what we're gonna get through. And that's really when things get a little bit goofy. Some of the 11th hour stuff, because that was where the charters all came out of. The, the original charters with Youngstown and that, that is still in some, in the court someplace that they didn't properly vet that before it got approved. So, a little bit frustrating, but it's, you really need a scorecard to keep up with it right now. Because, and Retsel works for two of the different groups that we're a part of. Retsel works with the Alliance, but Retsel also works with the First Ring. And some, and we're members of both and sometimes those groups don't align because the Alliance is largely suburban, high-functioning, well, I hate to say wealthy, but more wealthy school districts. The, the First Ring is a pretty high-urban mix of kids, a little bit demographic, a little bit different finance thing. So, it's really, you know, a lot of the Alliance schools are at the, I mean, they're, we were having a discussion today, but, you know, we're at the floor, so we collect, nobody collects less than we do per pupil in the state of Ohio. But a lot of the schools in the Alliance are in the same boat that we are. And some of the First Ring schools, 60, they use that $6,500 amount. Well, we know Cleveland collects over 10,000 per kid. So, it's a different, the ceiling and the cap and what's existing and what's non-existent, it's really, and they use it, it, it kind of turns it into a shell game as we get near the end of it. So, the only positive part about that, we, in any of the projections, we don't lose any money. But I will say with Mr. Sichaki sitting here that, that the Career Centers through the last two budget cycles have been huge beneficiaries of the budgeting process. So, they, both Governor Kasich and Governor DeWine, they, they have taken care of Career Centers, probably at about a rate of four times of what they've taken care of the rest of the public schools.
More directly related.
Yes, yeah, they've, they've really, and then that's kind of gone, kind of flown under the radar a little bit. So, but they, so, and Dave's not gonna advertise that.
No.
Yeah, especially when he's got seven other superintendents from districts in his office talking, you know, talking funding, so. Sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Mark. My commentary is over.
The only footnote I would mention is that when I did speak with the Senator's office, I made the observation that it would seem that this might be a politically astute move for some politician because since you have a twenty-some-year, almost thirty-year outstanding director from the Supreme Court to fix the schools. And if someone chose to, to take on this project, they may very well be viewed very positively for many years to come. So, we'll see.
Because, yeah, because the first school funding plan, the Rolf goes away. And the, and the, and the Ohio Supreme Court's already said, the Rolf is met if they adopt the first school funding plan. They've also said that Senator Huffman's and Senator Dolan's plan does not meet that requirement. They, so they, the, the Ohio Supreme Court's already come out and said, "Listen, you want the Rolf to go away, adopt the first school funding plan in some form. Anything short of that, it's still in place."
Good.
As opposed to last meeting, I have very little to report this meeting. I did, Career Center had its end-of-year presentations. It was breakfast on Monday previously. I attended that along with the board president and of course, all of the staff members were there as well. We do have, June is, I think, the only meeting in the whole year where we have two meetings at the Career Center. We have a special meeting scheduled for next week for personnel items. And it was a pleasure being here and enjoying the luncheon last week. The burgers were excellent.
Yeah.
Much appreciated, Mr. Evans.
It's good to get the grill back out.
Good to have the grill back on. And that's all I have.
Mrs. Etter?
I too was glad that I could attend the end-of-years staff recognition luncheon and to see the retirees, the ones that we couldn't recognize last year and then our new group from this year. And also was really a very eye-opening, but probably, probably really not expect, unexpected of so many people that are recognized for their multiple years of service. And, you know, the longevity of our staff here speaks volumes to what we do here, so.
We are a destination district.
And once you get here, you like the state.
Yeah.
I mean, a number of people with fifteen, twenty, thirty years' service. So, that was really something, well, appreciate them. That's all I have to say. And I couldn't go to the state final game and they, I couldn't see, and I couldn't be there. But I'm so sorry that I couldn't, but our girls really gave us a beautiful ride.
They put themselves well, like, yep, they're scrappers.
So proud of them.
They're just scrappers. I just, there's no better, that, that's the word, that this, they're just, they're just so scrappy. And, and, you know, just so fun to watch because they just, they're clawing and scraping in every little way they can. So, it's just, it's just really, you talk about playing for the love of the game, that's truly watching them, watching them play. And our boys too, like I said, the boys got the, and I, and I, the only comment I made to the boys is, just keep having fun. Because you, you know, and, and you've had both of your children, you know, and those teams were good teams and got to the, like, but sometimes teams seize up a little bit when they get to that level of play and they get a little bit nervous. And they thought, oh, you know, oh my God, it's district finals or regional finals. And these kids, and, and the softball team was fun because they started counting down from the beginning of the year and, and when they broke the huddle, it was like 23 more games, 22 more games. And Matt, I was talking to Kyle and he said at the state tournament, he goes, "There were one more game." That, when they broke the huddle, it was one more, it was one more game. It was like, wow, that, that was, you know, that, that was, the way it played itself out. So, good stuff.
Yeah. Congratulations to our state qualifiers too for track.
Track.
Darren and Kenny, what did I?
Darren, that's the third-best 1600-meter time in school history. He took.
4:30.
He ran 4:30.
He took three seconds off of his best time.
Yeah.
I talked to Doug about it. He said that, he goes, "The facility was a little bit tough because it was out of high school." They split like they did wrestling. They went to three different high schools. They didn't run it at Jesse Owens. So, they were Westerville North, Division III was. And he goes, "Parking was a pain." He goes, "But the track was fast." And he said Darren ran the perfect race. He just didn't have as much kick as some of those other kids did at the end. That would, you know, kind of kept him off the podium. But he, 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 there was nothing left in the tank when he was done. I mean, he, he left it all out there. And Kenny too, you know, Kenny broke the school record at, at the regional meet and, and ran a good race at state. But the times were just outstanding this year, so.
And then just to say, good luck to our extended learners that are gonna be starting for their summer school.
Anxious, anxious to, to have them back in the building and see, see how we're going at it, so.
Awesome. Mr. Naaman?
Yes, I attended the, the, the schools band and orchestra concerts too and saw Mr. Sokol's like, well, final last performance, but then it was like, he was at the, the parades and he was at, he was at the send-off, so I don't know if he's really gonna retire though. So, but there, it was excellent. I liked to see that, that, those last concerts, the kids. And actually, you know, being back, actually to have a concert was fantastic. So, that was, it was phenomenal. So, that, and actually, and then just to echo everyone else's comments, the spring athletics is like an embarrassment of riches because it's like we had, we had state qualifiers for track. We had the baseball team going to the district finals. We had the softball team. It was a great send-off on Sunday morning with, with some of the community being there and sending them off with the buses and the, and the fire trucks and everything else leading them out of the city. So, that was fantastic there. And then I attended the game as well. And, you know, like I said, what a season. I mean, what a, what a, what a team that was. It was really fun to watch them.
For sure. It's kind, the baseball game was kind of fun because W E O L broadcasted and they had Tim Alcorn, who's the voice of the Cavs now, the radio, voice of the Cavs, went back and, and that's who I used to, where I do football at. So, Tim spent the whole first two or three minutes of the broadcast talking about how successful the athletic programs. And, I mean, it was, it was like a commercial for Caga Heights Schools. And Tim and I worked together for, you know, 15 years on the football, football games. So, I, I was, I wasn't in the booth with him. I was kind of standing off to the side and I was listening in. He's on it, and, you know, and he, but he went through the whole thing. It was, it was really kind of neat. I thought, God, I hope our people are listening, all the, all the lover getting on the radio right now. So, it was kind of fun.
Yeah, it is. It's really good. So, that's it.
Speaking of that, I guess if you saw Zach Lauder pitched on Sunday and they spoke very, they talked about Caga Heights and everything else.
They, they put the screenshot on and it said, you know, 2000 and whatever, graduate of Caga Heights High School and then Xavier University. And rumor is that he may be pitching here next week. So, he, we just talked to Mark today because we're trying to figure out if, if it's gonna be Monday or Tuesday that he, they put, they sent him back down, they have unlimited call-ups this year in the major leagues because of COVID. Normally, there was, there'd be a limit on it, but I said, so Zach's getting frequent flyer miles, bouncing back and forth. But there, there's a chance that he starts against the Indians next week, one of, one of the games at the Orioles. So, that would be like way cool.
Yeah, really cool, really. I just have a couple of things. Graduation was so awesome outside. We missed you, Mr. Young. I hope that you enjoyed your, your son's graduation. Just gorgeous, even with the wind. It's just, just so gorgeous.
We're staying outside.
I love it.
Well, I saw, we got a lot of comments, people wanted to do that.
We're staying outside.
Yes, much cooler temperature-wise. Congratulations to Mr. Murray. I, I had five, I think, out of those seven that retired. And I couldn't be there. Unfortunately, I had to work and it was our, we were celebrating to staff members that were retiring in my building. But I, I was sad that I couldn't be there, but I'm very happy for everybody that's retiring. Girls softball, just incredible, just incre, like, just incredible. We had gone to states twice, little history. When I played in 10th grade and in 12th grade, we got killed in states. Like, just did not, exactly what you were talking about. We got there and didn't know what to do. But this team and, you know, Sidney Dyer diving into the dugout and just really, I mean, they went for everything. And we got, my family was fortunate, we were sitting in the first row just by luck of who we sat with. And you could see just the emotion and you could hear a lot too of the girls and the coaches and, oh, made you feel like you were right there, right, right there with them. So, pretty awesome. That's all I've got. That's all I've got. Regular meetings that are, oops, possible future agenda items. Anything? Hearing none. Inver, or upcoming board meetings, Wednesdays at 7:00 PM, June 23rd, July 21st, August 11th, and August 25th. At this time, I hereby move to the board, or I hereby move that the board adjourns to executive session pursuant to O R C Section 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of personnel of the school district. Can I have a second motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter. She did this. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Schuchert.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Sichaki.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. It is 8:15 and we are in executive session where no action will be taken afterwards.